I'm gonna yell at the top of my lungs and hopefully everybody can hear me. I am coming off the backside of the pole, so hopefully I'm not contagious, but the voice is a little crackly. Um, moving on to the agenda, everybody has the agenda in front of them? Is there any additions? If not, we'll move right into guests.
I make a motion we accept the agenda as presented. Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? Everybody in favor of the agenda as presented? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No move. Everybody's had the chance to read the minutes from the October regular meeting. Oh, shoot. Yeah, special meeting. We have a motion to accept those minutes.
Make a motion that we accept the October regular minutes.
Second.
Any discussion on that meeting? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, public comment?
Special meeting?
Oh, special meeting. I did have an extra check. We got the minutes on the special meeting.
I make a motion we accept the special meeting minutes from October. My second.
Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment? Anybody have something to say, sign? If not, we'll move right into guests. Well, it's Bob Brown, Region Seven Area Agency on Aging.
I'm gonna start out.
Okay.
Do we fill over here?
Yep.
And set the agenda down. Uh, my name's Hank Whiteenberger, and I'm your representative out of Huron County to Region Seven Area Agency on Aging. And I have a little trouble breathing right now because I had chicken for dinner, and I love chicken. But I'm allergic to it, so, uh, bear with me. Uh, Region Seven is an agency that encums to ten, ten of the counties in the area. Primarily the ones that I keep track of as best I can would be, of course, Huron, Tuscow, and Santa La. And my represented, representation on that board is to make sure that, according to the formulas, of course, the, and the formulas, by the way, are always against rural white people, but I don't mean that in a negative way. It's just we do not have any minorities, so we will not receive as much as, on a per capita basis, as Saginaw will. And that's just the cold hard facts. But, uh, my job is to make sure that we get our share of the money, and, uh, that is not a problem because of, of our new director here, Bob Brown, who has been with us, I think, about a year and a half and made some vast changes. We are not here to ask for money, which I know makes all of you happy. We're just here to inform you about what Region Seven is doing, um, to, in all the counties. And I think this is the fifth or sixth, uh, village or city meeting that I've been to. So, just as an informative basis, so I'm gonna turn it over to Bob. He's much more eloquent than I am. Aren't you? I don't know if I am either.
Thank you. I'm Bob Brown. I do have the honor of being the executive director of Regions, uh, Seven Area Agency on Aging. I was an executive director of an area agency on aging for 14 years downstate prior to this position, but I appreciate this position a whole lot more than I did the one downstate because in my plan and service area, I'm one of the 10 counties, Gladwin, I built my retirement home 40 minutes away from Bay City where our headquarters is. So, uh, a lot of people ask me what an area agency on aging is. Well, one thing is you don't have to pay for our services. They are free and well-deserved, and, um, you know, I have to comment, so I'm thinking off my feet instead of my standard speech here, and so I'm not gonna be as eloquent on this, but we've heard Hank loud and clear, we've heard about the town, and the board absolutely has taken a position of working and prioritizing rural areas, and so has the state. So, my mission is, is to work in the thumb, Grotsch Counties, Clare County, Gladwin Counties, where the populations are very low. And then, uh, one of the things we were able to do, we received $90,000 on the last day of the year. We were able to work with, uh, HDC, Human Development Corporation. It's a agency, a community action agency that the councils on aging use. And we were able to shift $30,000 to them, and we were also able to work with their budget to move money into Huron County at the last minute. Uh, that, that was a wonderful thing. My board had the foresight to give me authority to work with the counties so I could move money in the last month. I appreciated that because if we had to go through the bureaucracy and go back, we wouldn't have been able to shift that money so fast, and we would've had to give it impact to the state. So, that's one of our accomplishments under Hank's leadership. Um, so it's not all of the Bob show, like he likes to patrol. I do listen to my board. Um, area agencies on aging are best known for a couple of their programs. One is, we're one of those agencies that funnel the money from the feds to your local councils on aging, or whatever agencies the locals would like us to work with to do meals on this. The other big program that we do is, we take care of seniors, the disabled, and veterans in their homes from 18 on, um, and instead of going to an institution such as a nursing home. If they so choose, or if they need a nursing home, that's, that's a good thing that those institutions are there, but everybody should have the right to live as long as they can in what they choose as their home. And that's very diverse. That could be with relatives, that could be their own family home, could be assisted living, there's many possibilities that a person could choose as their home. The only place we can operate in is a nursing home because they're the other agency that gets funding to help folks. Um, a lot of people ask me, "Well, why can't the councils on aging do it themselves and be an area agency, area agency on aging?" And the reason is, is in the older Americans Act, which we're certified under, um, you have to have a certain population of people 60 and older, and there isn't any one county, three county, five counties that could meet that criteria. And the thought of the feds at the time that they formed this was, they wanted something regionally that was efficient, but they also wanted to keep it local so it had that local flavor and some flexibility. Hence, 10 counties seems to be the fit. Uh, forefathers of the 10 counties got together over 30 years ago, probably pretty close to 40 years ago, and said, "We wanna be an area agency on aging, we wanna work with the other." And we set up that governance and set up my board, and their wherewithal was very smart because if you, well, but, so COAs couldn't do it. The other option is to do a statewide, uh, agency and let the state run the area agency on your behalf, and we run at 5.1% admin. Give or take a couple of percentage points, we're within 5%. Point two down to point four, point eight. We're very efficient. The state can take up to 15% if they run it. So, 95 cents on the dollar from us goes directly to your councils on aging to do the direct services to seniors, veterans, and the disabled community. So, we're very efficient. Another thing I like to talk about is audits. You're all involved in audits. Ours have been clean for the last 10 years. In 10 years, we had received one recommendation, and it was to update a policy that had just changed in the last month, that the auditor, who's supposed to work with us all year, forgot to tell us to update that policy prior to their audit. Right, Hank? So, we're very clean, we're very efficient, we work on your behalf, we're glad to be there to do that. Um, if there's any questions, the other service we get, how many of you know about Medicare and Medicaid? How, how many of you have people that are studying it, or you see all these insurance companies, or, you know, pharmacies, and all these other people that are unbiased that wanna help you?
I used to bill before I retired.
Well, you have our number, and we do, we do Medicare, Medicaid, uh, you know, counseling. We have two full-time people that do it, and we have close to 60 volunteers that help out that were trained over six weeks to help you navigate that. We are unbiased. We don't care what insurance company you choose. We're gonna go through all your alternatives, tell you that, you know, do a swap, do a pro and con on each one, and align it to what your needs are, and then you get to choose. And we help you fill out those forms right online. So, visit us, set up an appointment. You got to December 15th to do that. If there's any questions, I'd love to take them, but we're taking our reserves. Oh, that's the only thing. Uh, gotta do my insurance bill, right? So, the other alternative, instead of a nonprofit that you all govern and have input in how we run, uh, would be an insurance company doing our care. And we obviously know how that goes. They're allowed to take 15% for their admin and 3% for profit. They really do care about people and not their shareholders. Uh, we care. So, the other, the other big mission we have, again, that funding, is to return our, our excess dollars, if we have any, to our clients. We don't keep the money and, we don't wanna send it to the state, we don't have shareholders. Our shareholders are our clients and your citizens. So, we're working on behalf of them, returning that money to them. In fact, we did a very awesome new program where we gave away almost 100 hearing aids this year. So, and what we did, we worked with the councils on aging to identify those people and give it. It worked so well, my board's very positive, and if the money exists next year, wants to repeat that program, so.
How many regions are there in this state?
16.
16?
Yes. There's 16, 660 nationally, so we operate under the older Americans Act and the older Michigan Act.
Can I just mention one thing? Uh, there, there are 6,000 seniors in Huron County. That's according to the last census. Uh, we spent over a million dollars in Huron County, just in Huron County. You'll find those figures in, in the pamphlets that we gave.
If you turn to the last page, there's a table.
And, and what I, what I'm trying to get to is, you people are out into the public, you people are, are the operating citizens of Elton. Someone here knows someone that needs some help, and we're willing to give it. You have our phone number there, just give us a call, we'll do what we can to keep them in their homes to see that they get the services they need. The problem that we do have is, if we do have a problem, our problem is through human development, they cannot get the volunteers, or the, actually, they pay a little bit, but they don't pay enough, and they don't have the money to pay, to go out and give the people baths, or do their house cleaning and things like that. The, the little menials chores that we take for granted, that the seniors, older than me, need, you know, older than John. Were you a fireman, John?
What's that?
Were you a fireman?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so. I was too, for that accident. Anyway, what I'm saying is, feel free to give those folks the number, or if you're in a position where you're, uh, they're relying on you, call us, you make the call, and we'll do what we can to help them.
I have a question. Do you have pamphlets that you can leave here in the hall?
Oh. Uh, we brought the brochures for the thing, and I apologize now, but we will send them to the hall.
Because I didn't know you guys existed.
We only have so many because we wanna keep our, our cost down.
Yeah, we appreciate, that was very informative, but there's actually services here that anybody that's big folks in.
Well, and that was the last thing, Hank kind of referred to it, the last thing that I was talking about, the finances last, we like to do a fiduciary. So, the county donates $2,688, and we return and leverage that money on federal and state grants to return a million dollars almost in services to, to the citizens of Huron County.
That's right.
And that, so, so a lot of it, we work through with HDC, other ones, the in-home care, we deliver and have our own network of providers, and if in doubt, please call us. And I wanna say that with the in-home, home and community base, the folks could make up to $2,200 a month and still qualify. So, it's not, it's not the poverty level of $800 a month. They just, you know, they, times it by two and a half or something, and they had another, as Hank likes to say, formula, to say, you know, if we keep seniors of modest income, not low income, in their homes, it's about 30% the cost if they, we have to take care of a minimum. So, it's an awesome program in a lot of ways, not to mention it saves taxpayers' money.
Thank you.
I thank you for your time.
Uh, Bob has a two-hour ride ahead of him, so, sorry with you, we'll just take our leave now. I've been to these meetings before, and they take a long time. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Christmas weekend.
Yeah, WLEW, thank you.
He's not here.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
Ask for money?
Ask for money.
I think my favorite over here?
Uh-huh.
I think last, no, where were you, were you giving $300 or anything?
$100, yeah. Last year, we sent it through DDA.
DDA.
Oh, okay. All right.
I move that we refer the Christmas weekend request to the DDA for consideration.
I'll second that.
Could you send some money with it?
If they show up, you can figure it out.
Any discussion on that?
What is that one for?
Christmas.
Toys.
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 Name for toys.
Oh, it's Matt?
No.
Oh.
We have a very jolly Santa Claus that these are for.
We don't know, they'll have to come to DDA and ask, I guess.
And I don't take any action on it.
Just want to loosen it up. And if they show up and ask the DDA, the DDA can...
Didn't you see Marty's blood pressure just go like this?
When is the DDA meeting?
The 28th at 12:00.
Thank you. Does the DDA have 300 bucks or not?
We'll see.
Okay.
I don't think so.
That's, you're talking DDA business here now.
Um, those in favor of sending $300 through the DDA, if possible, for the Christmas weekend, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, uh, is the whole business, even though we have no whole business tonight, and it's on the employee handbook, so I'm sure everybody's had a chance to read through the bread changes on it. And I'll turn it over to you, Jeff.
I move that we accept the revisions to the employee handbook as presented.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'll ask Phyllis, only because she's got a great, sharp mind, to just highlight the few changes that were in there.
First one was we added in overtime compensation. There's a whole new paragraph for that we didn't have before. Um, we changed the vacation policy of how many days in advance you have to ask to use your vacation. We added in, uh, vision insurance, 'cause that wasn't in there. Um, policy about 26-year-old dependents, that's in there now, too.
Some other language cleanup that wasn't actually changes, it was just, um...
The whole, the whole handbook's been rewritten, and it was just kind of some mop-up things that we had done, a couple items we missed, and just visioned out the details. Any more discussion on that? If not, uh, all the changes as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No move. Um, part-time police officers. Jeff Gallo, everybody know what happened in regards to the labor relations.
I think we'll do that in a formal motion. I move that we refer the consideration for part-time police officers to the finance committee for further review.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Pending some unanswered questions regarding finance, um, some other considerations, we felt it was best, rather than to move that on, to council for approval, that we take a, let finance take a look at that, and also, I imagine it may end up back the police to draft a, um, ad, to advertise, to seek out applicants in the process for, for interviewing, um, candidates. So, at this point, we've, we've tabled it, pending finances approval.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm not trying to put that up, but why would that, the ad writing go back to the, isn't the labor relations, aren't they the ones that do the hiring stuff, or?
I would certainly welcome any input from the police department, though, as far as...
That's fine, I just, that's fine.
If there's requirements that, that you seek and things like that, so, I think it's a joint, joint process.
That's fine.
Any more discussion on that? If not, those in favor of sending it to, uh, the committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No move. Uh, council speaker.
For the time period between October 10th through November 7th, we have bills totaling I move we pay those as presented.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? If not, I have a motion to shave the bills as presented.
They're working as a party vote.
Okay, yeah, those in favor, yeah, those in favor of, uh, the bills as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No move. I think you're gonna miss that.
You'll be better.
We'll start with you, Anthony, seeing you're sitting on the table.
Okay, me. Uh, everybody's been pretty good so far, or lately, anyway. Uh, with deer hunting coming up, obviously be a little short with people, but I think we'll be fine. Uh, this month, we had 33 runs, I think, or what it was, so we're well on track with over 300 runs we've handled here, which begins a lot for us, and we're here, so, about it?
Have you got any more interest in, uh, anyone wanna join the service?
Not that I do.
Should I put that thing on again on the Facebook page?
You can, uh, well...
Did it, did it interest the last time at all?
Uh, one person, but they qualified for it, and wanted to join, so...
Tape one's board we got now. So, yeah. Lonny?
Uh, we finished up fall, we're gonna discharge, our ICP sampling for the year is done, hydrants are pumped down, and probably a week and a, week and a half or so, we'll be putting up Christmas decorations.
Yay. No.
Cool. Chief?
Uh, just tomorrow, um, car is going over to McCormick's for car steering issues, and I guess Lonny said they're gonna do a safety check on it, check the undercarriage and everything, hopefully brakes, too. Um, Halloween was good. Um, complaints, we're down 34 complaints from last year at this time, which is terrible. Yeah, that's all I got. Got some training coming up for legalized marijuana, trying to get things figured out with that, too. That's about it.
Do you see anything that we're gonna need to do on ordinances or anything, or is that what you're gonna find out at the meeting?
Probably. I would imagine so.
Any reports? I guess we have none. Round in the bin. Um, we got a vehicle leaving. Marty, John?
We don't have to smile so much.
Well, I wanna say thank you for your years of service. Uh, it's not a, it's not an easy road to sit up here and make some decisions, especially sometimes aren't real popular, but you're put here to do the best for the village, and we sure appreciate all the years of service that you guys have done, uh, as citizens. John, you've been on fire departments and everything else under the sun, and Marty, all the extracurricular activities you've done out there with the lions and what have you. Thank you, uh, from the bottom of our hearts, we appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Lonny's really not going anywhere. He's sitting right here, man.
All right, you two.
You too, John.
Uh, public comment? Anybody like to say anything?
Yeah, again, I would like to ask why there's not more than just a sign on the door about when your committee meetings are and meetings, because it's unrealistic to expect everybody in the village to come check the door every day to see if there's a meeting, to know what's going on in our county. Because you can post on social media, close off comments, there's no comments, you can put it on WLEW that there's going to be a meeting, there's many avenues that don't, won't require feedback. I just think it's important that people at least know when these meetings are, other than a sign on the door. Because I know in the past, we've lived here 26 and a half years, and we used to get a phone call to our main number that would say when there was meetings to, about things, and those haven't happened in a while, and so, I'm just gonna...
Yeah, the phone calls, we started here a couple of years ago. Um, one of the things that we've done is we've backed off because it does tie up our phone system here.
Right. Well, that's why I said WLEW is available, social media's where you can turn off comments, whether it can't, where you can just put a post without people being able to make any comments on it, and so, those are options that are out there. I just think it's unrealistic to expect everybody to check the front door every day to see if there might be a meeting.
We're down the side across the street.
Not, I'm just saying it's...
You got friends at Elton or there?
Yeah, we could go, we, I've never had a problem, so...
Yeah, I guess we can get it on the sign, it's not a bad idea to, uh, put a committee meetings on there. Um, it's been done this way for years.
Just 'cause it's done that way doesn't mean it has to be...
That's right.
We also have, had trouble with social media in the past, we...
But I said you can turn off comments, and you guys might not know.
It still goes on from there, I'll tell you.
No, if nobody can comment on it, you can't stop what somebody puts on their own wall, but you can prevent people from commenting on your wall.
I know. It will, we decided to leave social media alone because we had a lot of trouble.
It was probably before they were enabled to not make comments.
You have no idea, 'cause you weren't here.
I've lived here for 26 and a half years.
Let's look into it.
I've lived in this town, and I have followed stuff on social media in this town. I'm just saying, it's not realistic to expect the number of village residents to come up here every day to see if there might be a committee meeting, or a special meeting, or something like that. We know when the regular meetings are, yes, those are once a month, but if those are changed, it's not on WLEW, it's nowhere to be found, and unless you come up every day and look.
Well, I think you can put on the radio because they charge, I was just gonna say...
Yeah, I was about to say...
If a regular meeting is changed, that has to be in the paper. It has to be, that's a state law.
Regular meetings are posted at the beginning of each fiscal year on the window.
I think, but everybody reads that sign.
I think, but everybody reads that sign.
And the sign is not any different than saying it here.
It is too, because...
These are the two places that always publish it.
No, it is. I pulled up here the other day, two days ago, or yesterday, what is today? I don't even know, Tuesday was Monday. I pulled up, I had to get out of my car to come read the sign. I couldn't read it from my car. I can read that sign if I pulled off the side of the road. I could have read that billboard. You can't read that sign unless you get out of your car and look. I'm just saying, and I have asked that before. I'm just saying.
Okay.
We can hear your request.
Yep. Retreat it. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got one.
Yes, what?
Your, the council table was $61,000. Could you kind of explain why it's so high?
It's been higher, we have one year eighty-some thousand.
Well?
Oh, I bet you, I don't know, Saw Grant?
Sixty-one thousand seems like a lot of money, Ray.
Six thousand, that was a Saw Grant expense for epidemic winters.
And the $9,000 went for Saw Grant.
Yeah, a lot of Saw, a lot of Saw Grant stuff. See, they got all new computers under the Saw Grant. You know, all the new computers replaced, the book into the system.
Your $9,000 is to Spicer, you're, for the Saw Grant, too.
Right. And that's all paid by the grant. Yeah, I would say a big chunk of that is being paid by the grant, Saw Grant.
I just wondered.
Lonnie?
What's that?
Pay attention. We're, we're, we're getting close to wrapping up the Saw Grants.
Yep, Spicer's is just working on a few, I mean, I think our iPads for the pickup and the second one are supposed to be after the first of the year. I think we're supposed to have them, but...
They have all the data in it by then?
Yeah, as far as all the hands-on or, you know, the things that we've done in the town, that, that's, that's wrapped up, but they're still completing, you know, they're partial.
Municipal analytics is still analyzing all the water, so we're stopping. They should get back to us about rates.
Okay. Anything else?
I just want to talk to you in the council table.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I make a motion when you adjourn now?
Worth it.
I'll second that.
If you're in favor?
I don't want to say aye.
Worth it.